Good evening. Want to call to order the Planning Commission regular meeting July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll ask them, clerk to call roll.
Oh.
Here, here, here.
Here.
Lachey.
President.
Maryna.
Here.
In me.
Here.
In our packets today and in front of you on the table was the agenda for this evening. Does anyone have any modifications to it? If not, have a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
For it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host, seeing none, agenda has been approved. Also in our packets, we had the two sets of minutes. We'll look at each one individually. The first one for a review was the regular minutes from the June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Everyone have an opportunity to review them? And was there any comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the minutes, both from the regular meeting and the nineteen special meeting, which is the twenty-fifth.
Oh, perfect.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved, which takes us to Agenda Item Four, the public comments on agenda items. If we have anyone which we don't have in the room, if there's anyone online, please raise your hand. And it would be comments related to the agenda. I do not see anyone online.
We approved the minutes from the special meeting?
He did go.
I did go, yep. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Thank you, sorry.
I thought we were doing them.
Very, Mr. Chair.
You're good. I don't see anyone online either, do you?
No hands.
No hands. So I will close out our public comments. Which takes us onto the old business items on the agenda. First one is the master plan survey questions, which is now part of our kit. And David, I know I'm gonna ask if you want to kind of pick them off unless Luke or something want to say before Dave speaks.
No.
That's it. Hi, Dave, welcome. Appreciate you being here.
So we have the second draft of the master plan survey and actually, as I was making the changes, I just replayed the meeting. So I, as I went through the meeting, I just was making changes as I went. So I hope I incorporated all of the comments and suggestions from the last meeting. I think the overall order of the survey, we can always decide how this starts out. I began with general demographics and then went into the residency questions, but we can switch that up if we need to. But otherwise, the other order issue was I took that, the general priorities for both the city and the tri-communities and put them toward the back of the survey. So, but otherwise, would you like to do a walkthrough and question by page right to page and just see if there's anything sticking out or any remaining changes?
I mean, I'm fine with doing it that way. And I guess, upfront, one of the questions I would have before we go through, when you're doing the surveys in the past, approximately how many questions do we think is kind of the maximum number? I've seen anything from like twenty to thirty, and we're probably pushing with demographics closer to fifty?
It is getting on the long side, I think.
Because I just wanted to bring that up because if we were thinking that we may want to have reduced numbers, we're going through, we can kind of decide, is there ones that we would want to consolidate or remove? And that's everyone else, but I was just curious what your experience was.
I, it's on the longer side of surveys from my experience, but I think a lot of them, the general demographics and residency should be fairly quick. So overall, well, once I put it into the online platform, it will give me an estimated time of completion. And then also I can send out a sample link to the members and everyone can work through it and see how long it takes individually. So I think we can do some testing before it goes live as well.
Great.
And a question relative to that, will people be able to stop? Like, at a point through it and then go back to it? Or does it have to be completed in one sitting?
I think it would need to be completed in one sitting. So you'd actually, you have to have it open on your screen. And I mean, you could certainly walk away and come back at a later time, but I think if you close the window or you can't see progress as far as I'm aware.
Would it still report then as an incomplete survey? Or would it?
Correct. If you were working on it and you got halfway through and then you just closed down your browser, it would not even show up as a completed survey. So it would you have to go all the way through and then press done at the end for it to record into the system.
Okay.
I can do a little bit of research just to see if there's any other options for that, but as far as I know, that's the we're limited to that. I didn't think about it.
Yeah, just general comment, I think you definitely incorporated a lot of the feedback we provided, and I thank you for that. It's really a lot of good information coming here and recognizing that, yeah, some people don't have the patience to go through a long survey. At the same time, I'd be hesitant going through it. I don't know what we we take out, so.
I was having a hard time.
So maybe, maybe it's something that if you can research, you know, very break, allowing them to come back and finish it later, or when we issue instructions, say, this is a lengthy survey, please allocate amount of time. This is important without any feedback, blah, blah, blah.
We could put a summary, well, we will have a summary paragraph at the beginning. So when you click on the link, they'll say, you're welcome to the City of Sagatuck Community Survey. The purpose is for this reason. This survey may take estimated ten to thirty minutes, depending on what it ends up. You please plan accordingly. So we can have some sort of introductory statements to say that, hey, this will take a little bit of time and effort, and we appreciate your time and effort in preparing their answers.
So everyone, okay, just kind of going through the questions?
I am too, but when we get to some of them, I'm interested in how we're, how it's gonna work. They agreed, neither agree, how that's gonna look, it went through in the format. So I'm interested in the sample one a little bit. So I'll just comment as we see those.
Okay. Page one, general demographics, the age categories were the four main categories. I think I previously had, I think, ten-year category, so we kind of made it a little bit more simple. So basically, children under eighteen, eight, nineteen to thirty-nine, forty to fifty-nine, and sixteen over. It's kind of breaks up the main segments of life in a way, so.
You guys okay?
Yeah, got it. Just trying to talk about.
Oh, okay. And then the ethnicity, race, gender identity, those are, I took those from the options and how those were asked from, actually, it was just I was, I searched online and found Tufts University had a really good set of standards for, for surveys in how to ask questions and how to categories to use. So in the, for the race and ethnicity, or those are the kind of the general census-related categories. And then I thought, oh, so.
Do we need the ethnicity here? Should that, okay. In my mind, I was just, why couldn't, I mean, I kind of call like Hispanic almost like a race, like in the race one. Could you just have Hispanic, Latino as one of the options?
They are separately defined through the Census Bureau. So the Census asks for both ethnicity and race, and those are generally opposite.
But to pull one ethnicity out, I mean, could you combine the question and just say, what is your race or ethnicity? It just
It kind of hits me.
Especially in these times.
Especially, I'm just basically, I'm saying, are you Hispanic or not?
We're letting them choose more than apply.
Yeah, but in that one, it's like you have to answer, are you Hispanic or not? It's almost like
It's a binary.
I'm really trying to say, okay, I just want to know who else is Hispanic. And then the next one, they don't even have a choice of being able to put themselves as Hispanic because it's got Indian, Asian, African-American or Black. Don't really know why Hawaiians in there. Come on, we don't have anybody, or even if we did, and then white Caucasian. So my feeling was just have Hispanic and like you, maybe you say race or it's ethnicity, and yet that could combine into one question.
Yeah, that's where I was going, just consolidate the decision.
We, I can look into that and there is a reason for this distinction here, and I don't have a good response for you right now, except for I can, I can actually give you a little bit of background maybe for our next meeting as well, but I can look at different ways to just include all into one. But there is a specific reason why Hispanic or Latino is pulled out separately as ethnicity as opposed to race. But that's that's not a great answer for you right now, but I will do a little bit of
And I'm just thinking if we're confused and the average person, especially if it's one of the first questions that they're gonna get, is age and are you Hispanic or not? It's like, then it's gonna be like, oh, why does that matter?
Again, in the census, it is actually phrased that way as well. It's ethnicity, Hispanic, Latino, or not, and then there's race separate. So but that's based on the definition of ethnicity and the definition of race. And so I think if you had those definitions, it would probably be helpful. But again, I can look at ways we just combine this into one as well.
Are we gonna use these to define the demographics of the town based on whoever responds, or is this just to give us a flavor of, I don't know, to understand the answers that come after that? In other words, because this, we're not gonna get a hundred percent response on this. So are we planning to get demographic information from the census data or something else too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So there'd be, in part of master planning effort, there would be a demographic analysis, housing data, population data, economic data. So all of that would be background figures that would be incorporated in the plan. So this would just be based on the makeup of who responded to this particular survey.
Now, Dave, I did see in a couple of city plans I looked at, their survey responses, they did track this, and then they kind of matched it up to the census. You know, kind of just giving you an idea, like if you had eighty percent respondents who are, you know, Caucasian, lines up with ninety-eight percent of our population. So there, we could draw a correlation during the evaluation of the survey, you know, to the census data.
I'm gonna reserve judgment until I see what David gives us.
On the next point, can we add sexual orientation slash gender identity?
That's what I was.
I was thinking it could be some, just like you identify as an LGBTQ plus person, yes or no?
Okay, would you like to, would that be proper in that question as combined or separate?
I think combined. I think you can find resources from maybe, I don't know, the ACLU, or I can probably find your resource on a question if you're unable to find that. And I think I don't know.
I think if you try to put it in gender, it's like, you're still a man, woman, transgender, binary, and then it's just a matter of do you identify as part of the LGBTQ community? So I see it as a yes or no question that follows your gender.
What? How could be a yes or no question?
If you, do you identify as?
I would prefer a list of, are you male, female? I, you know, I mean, I think there's ways to write it that include, are you a male homosexual, a gay woman, bisexual? I think there's ways to say that, in addition to just man, woman, transgender, non-binary, non-conforming. I mean, I think this is overly limiting, in my opinion. I mean, if you gave me a list and you said yes or no, I'd say, yes, I'm one of these.
Yeah. Well, I guess, I think we kind of went back when I was looking, so you could have, you know, male, female, and I guess you can put in transgender, but then the next question was, do you identify? I don't really care if they identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, queer. It's just, we were trying to get a gauge as to what percentage of the respondents may identify, but I really don't care whether they're a female, lesbian, or male homosexual, or
Well, what I care about is, and the reason I say is because gay, the word gay is usually identified with male, whereas lesbian or gay woman is represented woman. So there's ways to word this so that we're able to identify what percentage of our respondents identify as LGBT, LG, let's say, LGB.
Well, if you said, do you identify as LGBTQ plus, and they answer yes or no, then you're identifying what percentage of the respondents fall into one of those categories. And I think anybody who lives in this community would probably know what LGBT Q pluses.
I'm not gonna split hairs over that, just so we add sexual orientation in some shape or form to the category, to the questions.
I mean, basically, when you ask the question about male or female or intersex, you're asking, what sex are you?
Correct.
And then in terms of LG transgender, bi-gender, non-binary, that's really about gender.
Correct.
So it's sex and gender. But I'm, I just want to get, I just want to understand them.
That's why I kind of thought it should just be, and woman, but then you're gonna have some, someone who identifies either one, you know?
I mean, I think for the purpose of survey, I could care less whether the respondent is a man or a woman. I care more about,
Right.
are they part of our LGBT community or are they part of our straight? But that's just me, so.
No, it's not just you. It's me too.
No. But I think that, like we've all talked about, it's part of, you know, the marketing of the community, you know, it comes from the convention bureau. And so it's to be able to kind of have some data in your master plan that relates to it, I think would be important. Just a matter of simplifying it to where it doesn't get too complicated. I don't want people to think we're focused too much on it. That's why I think it's simple yes or no answer.
I agree. And I like the idea of, at the end, you'll be able to say, okay, our demographics is thirty percent, our respondents are in that same range. So I think yes, no, on sexual orientation after gender identification.
Oh, separate question after gender identity?
Yeah.
I'll take a shot then.
And you know, some of the ones, some of the categories you have later in there have like a subsequent question, so it could almost fall within that framing, just be, you know, a simple yes or no that follows it.
And not to nitpick, but you say transgender, pick one, woman, man, or transgender. There's people that would say, I'm a transgender man. I mean, it's, I think you're kind of blurring things there. So you can be a man, woman, transgender, cisgender. Pick two.
Right, you can be non-married, non-binary, non-conforming, man or a woman.
Right.
So simply yes or no, that's, I'm sorry, I have a, I have a problem with that.
You're either, you're either part of the community of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or any of the other with the plus, or you're not. Right? It's a yes or no.
Then simply make the other question, are you a man or a woman?
Are you male? What I said initially.
Okay, I didn't catch that. That seemed like it was gonna be this whole question and then an additional one on LGBTQ plus.
No. I would say that my preference would be, okay, you're a man or a woman, period, then do you identify as one of the other letters? Okay.
Is everyone supporting that?
Nope.
Well, I'm not the chair and I'm not the vice chair.
Well, we're not voting. I know, we're
This isn't the final version, so we can, I can
I'm just giving, I'm telling you, he asked a question, answering his question.
Understand. So we're, I'm sure we're open to suggestions. What, how do you think it should be written? What?
I already have made a
Well, yeah, but you left out me in particular in your suggestions. So I didn't get your full list of options.
So cisgender male, cisgender female. Look it up if you don't know what it is.
I know, but that's what we're gonna ask our people to look, do is look up that through the survey. How do you think?
There's a thing called Google.
I know, I know. Yeah.
I may sound very politically incorrect, but what is the information gonna tell us? First, right? What are we trying to understand? I know we're trying to understand demographics as a whole. We can go as granular as I mean, we can really get down into the weeds, right? So I think we're asking a question of how far down, at least I'm asking, how far down do we need to go? Not anybody excluding. It is no different than what is the purpose of asking whether a respondent is Hispanic? How is that going to impact what we do as policy in this?
I'll agree with that conversation. I'll agree with that conversation completely. We can get rid of all the top halves to questions. I don't think they affect our master plan at all.
Well, I too think that both historically, on good and bad, this town has a history of both in the gay community, and I use that word as broadly as I can, Sagatuck has a reputation of being the place to go in the Midwest or a resort town. And as we do, I don't think that translates to African-American, or Hispanic, or Asian, or Pacific Islander. I don't think it even translates to men or women particularly. I don't think women go, well, yes, I'm doing it. So if we are going to decide things in terms of how this community is going to look in five years, I think it is important to know what percentage of our respondents are LGBTQ plus identifying people so that we can form anything from parks to transportation to, you know, I think, you know, I think there's a lot of things. I wasn't prepared to follow my sword on this. I think it's a relatively simple thing to do sexual orientation and gender identity. It's twenty twenty-five.
We're in agreement, we're in agreement. I'm in agreement with that. I like what the chair said. It'll give us data that says this, we're getting responses at thirty percent, and our true demographics from the census is thirty percent. So, okay, we're getting a good representation in our surveys. That's, that's the only thing I think we can draw from those demographic questions. Because you're not getting a hundred percent respondents, you're just seeing, is it representative of our citizen?
So one question says man or woman, or male and female, and the next is do you identify as LGBTQ plus? Let's go on. Ryan, number four.
National background. My only input here is I think as a, on a per capita basis, we have a very large percentage of our population that has a background in real estate, so I would suggest we just make that its own category of profession.
Where do we group it in right now?
Business, finance, law.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Since, since a few of the real estate
There's lawyers out.
There's two other, there's two other professions in there, don't worry. So it's not total protectionism.
Sorry.
I'm okay.
I was actually a little confused when I read what category is your profession or professional background if retired? Is it supposed to be if not retired, or?
I think the professional background is tied to the if retired, because if you're retired and you just see what is your profession.
So shouldn't it be current or past profession? Because you want to capture everybody.
Yeah, I guess that's a little clear.
In what category is your profession, or what was your professional background if retired, if you are retired?
It does, it does.
Profession.
Yeah.
Oh.
Or you could have this, or if retired.
Or maybe like a sem, we could put a semicolon in there, give it a break, yeah.
Break it up. I read it as if you're retired, you answer this, but should we have retired, though, as one of the do we want, that's, isn't that not meaningful to the to know if we have a retired population?
I think it will, but I mean, that comes up in
Yeah, what do you currently work?
Oh, you're currently working. Missed it. Sorry, didn't mean to send us off.
So we're thinking real estate would have its own.
And I'm up for, I think, there's just, I just think it's a big base here.
There was a bunch of them, we're kind of like grouped together, like agriculture and natural resources. I was like, well, okay, a rock quarry and a farm's kind of the same, but it's but I understand you can't list out eighty different, you know, professions. Is everybody like real estate being separated?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other comments on professional background?
I think we're looking good.
Great.
Then the next one does, where, where do you are working, but it gives us the data.
And then the next one is, where do you currently work? So you're, you do not work, either you're retired or in school. Or we can separate that out. If you like, I do not work in school, or I do not work retired, we can separate that out if that would be helpful. So otherwise, it's where you, what is the physical location of your
Correct.
Your job?
Well, even though I am retired, I work.
Exactly.
So I I'm not work.
I'm still checking City of Sagatuck.
Before that says
I don't
Outside my home or something.
I I am not employed, maybe, I don't know if that
Yeah, I don't wanna, housewives or do some job too.
Could be, where are you currently employed?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's always like, she doesn't work.
Right. Would you say currently?
She works.
Where are you currently employed?
Yeah, no, that's
Not currently employed, City of Sagatuck. I mean, what we're really trying to get down to is like, are they working here in the city? Are they working in the tri-community, county, or outside?
Where are you employed? And we have the options, but if you are not employed, would you like that phrase a different way? You could say, I do not work, I am not employed, I prefer not to answer, or I, or not applicable?
I don't know, I'll have to think about the wording.
You taking employee kind of covers it.
Yeah, I do.
Because if you're not employed, then you are retired.
Well, yes, but no. I mean, I'm retired from my job at work, but I'm not retired in life.
I'm not employed, but I'm raising children at home.
Right. It's, does it, usually you're just trying to get a sense of the people, or if they're, the question I think really is geared towards if they're working, are they working in the City of Sagatuck, the tri-community, Alligan County, or outside the Alligan County? You have to give an option for
Because we're trying to see what economies people are dependent on. I feel like that's what this question is going after, which I don't feel one way or the other about this, but is there any merit to having remote in there as an option?
It just popped in my head.
I think that's a good
Yep, just because I think there's a lot of people who technically work in Sagatuck, but they're for some big company elsewhere.
Especially since the pandemic.
Yeah.
And then it gets back to like a later question. When we ask where they live, you could say, well, okay, if all we're really trying to do is get a sense of our respondents, do they live in the city? Do they own a business in the city? Do they live outside the city? Then you could, you could possibly say, why do I care where they work?
Yeah, that's true. That's fair.
You know, so
I think that's, yeah.
Did you hear that we were
Suggested, I do not work outside my home.
Yeah, no, we're saying like, is it, if they're gonna tell us where they, where they live later, does where they work even matter?
Well, I think, yeah, we want to know where employment is, you know, are they in the community, what do we, what do we have for jobs, employment base in the community? And I actually really like that, that I do not work outside my home, because it really doesn't matter necessarily if they're employed or not employed. They're not going somewhere, or they're not working.
And, and a different contextual thing too, that I saw pop up in past debates are, there's an argument made that everyone who lives here has a business in this community and therefore relies on the tourism industry, whereas there's people who live here who think CJG work out of Detroit, I work out of Lansing, like we're working out, we're living here and working out of other areas and bringing money into here. So I think it's important, because I'd like to know where people are drawing money from.
How much do we depend on?
Exactly.
For the record, my business is at my house, so.
Oh, is it? Oh, I know, I know you've commuted a couple of times, or you
I commute a lot, but my, my business is from
Oh, okay, that's fair.
Your office is in Kent County Airport?
No, no, I don't. There's the flight to Toronto's too long, so I drive.
Residency?
Residency.
Okay, so the first is, what is, well, this first is like, what is your interest in the City of Sagatuck? So and this is, we want to know, you know, if they, first of all, are you a part-time or full-time resident? And then if you're not, you know, why, why are you taking this survey? What is your interest? Well, you may And then if you're not, you know, why, why are you taking this survey? What is your interest? Well, you may work here. You may own property here, you may own a business, or or you may have another interest. Maybe just a place that you really love and you uh, are here every week. So I I don't know. So that would be the other. So we, one of the why people are taking the survey.
The only, the only comment I had with this question, not really a comment, but question is, do does it make sense to break out um, investment property or anything? And it technically falls under a business, but if we want to separate. Does it make sense to separate the two?
How do they deem what's an investment property or what's not an investment property? But they put that in.
Yeah.
I own property and they can check all that applies, so it could be I own property, I own a business or.
Just some people look at it as a business, some people look at it as an investment. Won't necessarily know how to answer the question. That's kind of why I asked, but. Do we plan to offer this survey as we did with the waterfront district to people who are, I I offered to people at events and uh, like in front of the post office and where I'm going with this is maybe we need a category of, I'm, I'm a tourist, I'm a visitor. What's your interest in Sagatuck? If we're not, if it's just going out to residents, um, then we don't need that, but.
I I think the QR code will be available on on various posters and publications, so I think there would be folks that take it that may just be frequent visitors or just love the area, so that's a possibility. Um, but I think in the other category, that 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 tourist answer would probably be one of the the primary responses for others, so it it could just be its own.
It can actually have its own line though.
Maybe we keep other, but then tourist visitor could could be a specific answer.
Yeah. Well, all are part-time, work in the city, own property in the city, own a business or investment property, this will be. Tourist.
Uh, would you like to, so then would you like to break out the the property ownership as in, I own a principal residence versus um, versus I own investment property or some other type of.
That's kind of the next question. If you're asking where the resident, their permanent residency is.
I think that's previous, maybe we can just add in tourist. And the other. And then we can move to just describe your residency.
Uh, the residency question then, is that encompassing enough? Your full-time primary, part-time second home, Douglas Sagatuck Township.
Why wouldn't you ask the same of Douglas and Sagatuck Township relative to full-time, part-time?
Well, hey, um, we suppose you you could.
I mean, I'm just curious.
I I didn't hear what you said, Bobby.
Oh, why would you not ask the same question of Douglas and Sagatuck Township relative to full-time, part-time? I don't know.
My, my, I'm trying to think of how to word it, so it just, you don't get the wrong answer. So it's a, it a registered resident? Cause if they're a part-time and those others, maybe they're registered in Florida, wherever their residence is. And so they would have to, that would be their answer as opposed to separating everyone in the other local townships and cities. I, that's. My thought was, it was the city of Sagatuck's master plan this time and Douglas already asked in their plan, are you full-time or part-time? Do you plan to, and they didn't ask about. That's, that's, that's how I read it anyway.
That's fine. It's not, I mean, I was just curious.
I know it's kind of adjusting to the city versus the tri-community approach. No, I mean, we hit them all there, Dave. Okay.
All right, and then the the next one is our, um, we talked about the the map associated with, you know, where do you live? If you are a a uh, full-time or part-time resident, where do you live? And we had talked about uh four areas being too little, six being probably the top end. Um, and so uh uh, we have a map here and um you're looking to maybe divide this up a bit more based on your comments, so um I mean, I'll just read down the the areas. Area one would be waterfront in Dunes area, which would be generally the the green on the map. Uh, area two is is west of the river. Um, and area three is west of the river. Um, and so that that pink area is gonna be I I think that may need to be divided up based on a comment I heard last time, that Campbell is is much different environment than Park. So I thought maybe we could divide up that pink area, kind of a Campbell oriented area, then a Park oriented area. Is that still a priority or do we want to group those together?
Well, they're definitely different as someone who lives on the Campbell area, so. Um, if you're trying to filter answers people might give about things like a non-motorized trail on Park Street, I think you might want that information broken out. People on Park might be opposed to it, cause they don't want the disruption and the people on Campbell. Like me would say, that sounds like a great idea, so. But I agree with not having too many.
Right.
Zones too.
Cause the map that just showed the four, you know, gave us.
Yes, this is four and and we in, um, Luke and I discussed. Uh, the pink would be one that we could do everything, front and gamble is in that response area, and then everything else. Uh, be being in the Park Street area of response.
I'm finding it way whether it's four or six. Long as there's, you know, as long as the map distinguishes it, so somebody doesn't have to decide where's the hill. You know, it's, so long as there's six colors, if we're gonna have six areas.
And then on the east side of the river, um, we were discussing whether or not lake should be pulled out separately from the rest of the downtown area. So on the east side of the river, you'd have downtown, Lake Street corridor, and then on the hill.
CJ, what do you think? Do you feel different over there?
Well, I I just see it's, that's a, there's what, sixty houses on that, mid-sixty residents with the condos and things and it's big enough and it's its own art, it's its own uh, district. I'm okay with separating it out. I just think it's maybe a little why, why just did that just get pulled, that one street get pulled out? But.
I'd, I'd generally agree with that. And then I'd probably just shift over the hill into north of Mary Street and east of Water. I feel like it's weird to have Lucy and Spear part of the downtown when those are more residential. If that makes sense, so then going up past the Southern. But that's, I don't think we need to make a whole new class. I think we can just make it brown, right? Maybe?
You said north of Mary Street.
I would, I would say like north of Mary and maybe we can just go east of Butler along there. That makes sense to you?
Or east of Griffiths, you mean?
Or uh, no, just right over how um, the like lower Spear and Lucy Street and then going up Holland along the river. I don't know if that necessarily has the same. I won't even break it out separate. I just make it like the, I just make it all part of the brown, like Maple Street and the hill.
Correct.
So as Mary.
But.
Okay, so.
But I'm open to other, if if you think that conflates to many things.
I guess.
Yeah, that's fair.
I I think the housing stock um, makes sense one, say lower spear versus upper spear is definitely distinguishable.
Okay, then that's fair. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I guess I would ask the question now, is this is this going to be an interactive map or are they gonna be picking? Cause the more we add in here, the more complicated it's gonna get for people to understand, so.
I think they just pick one, which number applies to them. By looking at the map.
By looking at the map, okay.
Yeah, we we would have numbers on the map. If if I can make it interactive, I I will, but but I'll see what.
Like the map you have in here, it's got the four, you would just then become six. There'd be six columns.
Right.
And then you would just kind of click on, you wouldn't even have to have descriptions, you know, of on the hill or downtown.
That's correct.
I was just thinking if it's inter, and I know we talked about this and said we'd number it, but I was just saying, it's interactive and you have more, you can get away with having more. That was just my own.
Okay, so Luke, are we?
Trying to make notes, um, but yeah, so change that from, separate that, separate this.
Yep.
Let's go. And then obviously, yeah, we can bring that back and and maybe we can even fire that out via email. I mean, this is a pretty quick change I can make and then send it out. Make sure that I have everyone's understanding in mind and then, yeah.
Forty-five minutes and ten questions.
Um, then, well, part-time resident, do we even want to add the, what street is your residence? Or is this enough to get the map information?
I like having the street of residents listed, especially for like Singapore and Ridgeview might be different. Um, I mean, there's a lot going on that that extra layer might be helpful. There's a apartment complex in the upper right corner that has a lot of people. There's Old Mill. Um, I mean, it's just, I think it would be useful. Um, I know I.
Oh, that they do, if they don't, they don't.
Yeah.
I would just, I mean, I'm. I wouldn't want you to put in parentheses, do not give your street address. We're asking for is the street.
Right.
No, it's just the street.
Then it's next is uh, how long have you lived here? Are you okay with those uh, these breakdowns?
Seems fine to me.
And then we we talked a little bit about housing last time, um, concerning uh, you uh, describe your home, so we have a I think, I think this is a pretty much all encompassing. We have accessory dwelling, single family, then we have a attached home, which called duplex townhome. Um, attached to other units. Um, then we have a a attached condominium dwelling apartment complex, an apartment attached above commercial space or mixed use.
Good thing we don't have any homeless people in town.
That's right. They can, they they can't do the survey.
So what is the difference between a condominium dwelling and an attached condominium dwelling?
And I I well, it's all about the the ownership, so um those two, I was thinking about, we could combine those um. Actually wouldn't mind maybe just deleting attached condominium dwelling and just have attached home, which is something where you're gonna share walls. So you, you know, duplex townhouse.
Just take out the button, not a con.
Yeah, and ma- maybe just the con, cause condominium is a form of ownership, not a specific type of unit. So um I think we do single-family home, which is detached, attached home, apartment complex, apartment complex, which would be, you know, number apartments together versus an apartment attached or above commercial space, which is more like mixed use.
Right.
Attached to or above? Attached to. And this is where sometimes I would find myself getting lost in language. So um, accessory dwelling, since the first option is accessory dwelling. I think a guest or in-law suite secondary to a main home on the lot, is that an adequate enough explanation? Because most people don't know what an accessory dwelling is.
Yep.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I I I like to have accessory dwelling and just, and then just define it or describe it, but also we could ju- if we just said guest or in-law suite or maybe sort of like a a secondary guest or in-law suite ancillary or secondary to a main home. I mean, we we, I mean, we could just describe it rather than using the term.
Well, you could maybe start out, start the sentence uh, or the point with guest or in-law suite secondary to main home on the lot, ash, accessory dwelling. I don't, I just want to be sensitive to inside versus outside language.
I I think it'd be a bit more understandable to to the, the everyday resident, uh, the terms guest or in-law suite are much more recognizable than accessory dwelling.
And people know what's secondary? I guess when you say on the lot, yeah, okay.
Exactly, and on the side of our. We have the question about, do you plan to become a full-time resident if you're a part-time resident? That that was mentioned at the last meeting.
I like the word envision as opposed to plan, it's just semantics.
Uh, do you envision?
Envision becoming a full-time resident at some point.
Okay. Uh, primary reasons for living in the city? I think that's.
Yeah, and I guess if we're gonna allow tourists to fill this out, it would become a question is, what's your primary reason for living in or visiting the city of Sagatuck?
I think those are really different.
Yeah, they're very different, but.
Very. I mean, if the tourist goes south, they're not gonna answer this question, cause they don't live here, I would think.
So I think we want to know ultimately our residents, what if either.
But I was just thinking, because we're asking them earlier if they're a tourist, so then we can kind of break them out and then be curious to see, well, what what are, what's driving tourists to come to there as a small-town character?
To weed them out, if part-time or full-time resident, what is your primary reason? Try to lead them not to answer.
And I don't know about everybody else, but it would seem, I think, difficult to pick three or to be the three.
Then you get into that ranking, which I like rankings, but then some people won't take the time to do it.
We could do, if it's not pick three, we could rank or we could do choose all that apply.
Yeah, I like all that apply.
Not necessarily.
I like rank, but I think it takes, takes people longer to do it that way, but.
Well, and I mean, just personally speaking, and I'm not suggesting redesign a survey for me, um, but the primary reasons that Bob and I chose to live here was water, dunes, art and diversity. And so we've got art. Do we have art here?
Nope, that's missing.
The only one you have of those is rivers on Lake Michigan.
Nature, art, nature, nature could be dunes. It changes through the year too. And it changes, my my, my reason changes from spring to summer to fall. Yeah, I think arts and culture needs.
Yeah.
Arts and culture is a good way.
Anything else?
And I guess diversity, we're kind of throwing that into welcoming an inclusive community, or we can just change it to diversity, it's just.
I'm not, I mean, I'll leave that up to all of you. I don't feel straight, as long as diversity is addressed in the survey.
Exactly.
I see welcome, a welcoming, diverse and inclusive community.
Yes.
Perfect. And are we going with all that apply? Because then that kind of negates the word primary.
Yeah.
What are your reasons for living in Sagatuck?
Yeah, you either have to rank them or you have to like.
Correct, in my mind.
Let people list three or five, and then when you, if they list three or five, then you kind of get a feeling of the ranking because of how many of them got number one, how many got number two. Quantities, yeah. Survey comes back and there's so many more of this one, you know, that was. You could say choose no more than five. But whatever. Cause somebody may.
One of.
Although it applies, all that apply.
And if we can filter about five or whatever.
Let's say, what are what are your reasons for living in the city? Choose all that apply.
Yeah.
And we'll add plus the culture and then also add in diversity to a welcoming and inclusive community.
That's good.
Perfect.
If you were to move, will be your main reasons.
Then we want to know if you were to move elsewhere, but would be the main reason. So. We were.
So we're asked to choose one is the main reason.
Um, this could. Well, that's a good point. We could. Maybe this could be similar to the last one, just choose all that apply.
But what would be the reasonable reasons yet?
And then it was mentioned last time, if you were to move, would you desire to remain a resident of the tri-communities area? Sagatuck, Douglas or Sagatuck Township. Yes, no? And then we get into our our question of small town character in in the was suggested that we ask, you know, how would you best define small town community character? And then again, I think we have our make a decision issue. Should we rank these? Should we choose top three or all that apply? I think this one we want, we definitely would probably want to narrow down. What are your top reasons or or rank them? Um, so I like top three or rank and for this one, but not all that apply.
I agree. Makes you say all that applies, you may not get any good data.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Because a lot of these things could, I mean.
And I like rank, but I'm also okay with choose three.
Well, we know which one will be last on here. Knowing your elected officials. I'm glad it's the bottom of the.
These will also be randomized, so that won't be the last option.
Well, it's already there. It makes it easier for people to rank it.
Um, should we? Should we try?
Now, if they put like your elected officials.
I my opinion is we'll get more responses with top three than ranking, but.
I think you want people to think about this question.
Because people get frustrated in the ranking. They're like, was it four or five?
Right.
No, it's.
And then we have an open-ended.
I like that.
So just give people an opportunity to elaborate a bit.
I'm sorry, David, back, small town and community. Do we need both? They're kind of. Duplicative. How would you best define? Small town character? It's just a thought.
Just because the title says small town character.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yep, it's good.
Um. I hate to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it. So through some. Personal experience, I've known some people who have left the town because they don't believe. It no longer meets their criteria for small town character. So do we, to that end, is it? Worth revisiting? If you were to move elsewhere, what would be the main reason? I don't know if I'm getting too circular in this or not.
I know you're going. I had written down, I skipped it. You want? Think you're going to ask about.
Oh, what?
No, 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 not at all, not at all.
So, yeah, should there be an option of a smaller town feel, but you know, it has more livings, more space or more rural.
I tried to link it to rural, but then I saw the more space and it kind of said, no, that's no. It might be over engineering that, but this it's a data point, that's all. And throw it out there.
Yeah.
You don't want to ask.
I don't. I don't know how to ask it.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I was gonna, you don't want to ask a negative, like you're leaving because I don't like the town anymore, but.
A place that used to be like Sagatuck.
But it would be important to, it would be important to know that if we could find a. Meaningful way to ask it about.
Yeah, someone may not prefer living in a tourist community. They may.
Due to.
Small, right, smaller town that.
Right.
You know, not a tourist attraction. So that that could be, one one could just say, too many tourists, I want out.
Due to the changing character of Sagatuck.
I was thinking something about the change in character as well.
I that would be a really important question to ask, I think.
Wait, does that fit under if if you were to move elsewhere as a reason, just as one of the options?
I think so.
I think that's a good one.
Character shift is a good way to put it.
You could even just put town character and let people, you know.
Sure.
We're going to all the efforts trying to make find out why people want to stay. Let's just be true cover all the bases of why they think they might want to. Both incredibly important.
They're good. The catch just.
Might just clarify something about the current, like as in Sagatuck's character, rather than someone may say, I want to go somewhere where there's better character. Some different characters. So maybe just say that.
Different characters.
Yeah, exactly. There's something about like the current town. Something identifying that to the city itself.
Yeah.
Moving on to parks. I think we got them all.
Yeah, we did add in the 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 Sagatuck wilds. How frequently do you use them?
This is just going to be a column type of question where they check off week, where you get your house. So we think about check weekly, monthly, several times.
Yes. Yeah, this is, uh, all parks will be on the left column and there'll be columns with little dots.
So drop it.
Yep.
The only question I had relative to this question is where where are we consciously only including the Sagatuck? Parks versus the community parks? If it gets too long.
I know. I think that's important. Since just the city, I think it's important just to have an answer about ours cars. We may, we may find that nobody ever goes to this one, or this one's really getting used or. To drive some future plans for a bathroom at all.
I was kind of thinking we also is it valuable for someone to say, well, I don't, I want our parks because I go to the Sagatuck Dunes Park, right? Or something there that's more attractive and like, does that help us drive the direction of our parks?
Oh, that's a good point. Other, and there's other.
Name. I mean, it could be, it could be as simple as that or other community parks or something like that. And I'm not married to it. I just, if it was important information, just throwing it out there.
Well, theoretically, there are parks and green spaces that are attracting young families to communities, the availability of that. So it's sort of important.
Yeah, like I don't see crow's nest trail on that, but that's one that I go to a lot more often than John Woolham, but they're essentially in the same area.
Dave, on the next one. I think my suggestion would be to ask them if they have suggestions or recommendations relating to the facilities, because I think if we just ask them, are facility improvements needed? You're probably going to get a lot of yeses. And it's it's almost like it's leading in many ways. I'd rather hear their suggestions.
Okay.
Any personal?
Any suggestions for these parks? And then they might be facilities, it might be.
Could be other things, yeah.
What? Maybe just more of an open-ended question then?
Like an open, right.
Yeah.
It it maybe just, you could say, like, considering the the parks previously listed. Um, do you have suggestions for Rubens something?
Yeah.
Rather than having, this is, this would also be difficult to structure, whereas, you know, here all them, yes, no, and then. Right, you're open-ended response each. So I think it would be probably simple. Just have them say, what's on your mind? Which park?
Yeah.
Okay, then moving on to downtown economic development, tourism, local business.
Um, I I apologize. I meant to make a couple of suggestions generally about things which we include. And one of the ones I've been thinking about and thought of for a while. Um, is asking people whether they think the city should move towards a downtown development district. Um, and the commensurate part of it is the institution of a tax incremental financing plan, a TIF. Um, the things that that would benefit would be a second downtown bathroom, which people have wanted for a long time. Um, it would also probably pay for generally could pay for like snow removal at our business district. So I think somewhere in our master plan, I think that people should be asked whether they think. Um, what if they think about the idea of formation of downtown development district? Douglas has one, for example. Um, those are the kind of forward things that I think you should be looking at, not just kind of maintaining what we have. I don't know where we put it in and how exactly I always ask it because I was talking to somebody and they said, well, they're not going to know what a TIF is.
That's my.
Yes.
Because I could have, you know, they have to.
But it is part and parcel. You can't just say, do you support the development of downtown, the institution of the downtown development district? I guess you could, but. I I think it's an important question to ask, so. Going it out there. Somewhere. And it seems like under resident development, tourism, local business and downtown, that might be a place to put it somewhere.
You could listen in here as one of the rankings of how important they follow. It's important, not important, I'm sure. And those who understand it would be able to check it off. I think council should be acting on.
We ask them question a different way, right? But that's very clear and easy for them to understand.
If to define, yeah, define what that item is.
So maybe it's a separate question.
Right.
Completely separate question rather than ranked, but. Uh, I I'm just saying, I think the idea should be included in the master plan, the concept of of. Because it is, I I, you know, there are going to be people because it does take from. Incrementally from the schools. I think there will be some some pushback, but I think with education, um, it's a positive and a lot of communities have them and it really. There's there's two main needs that I I have identified in downtown that people talk about. One is the business owners talk about that they don't. Or people talk about that they don't clean the sidewalks from snow and ice in the winter. And DDA certainly pay can pay for that. And the other thing you hear over and over.
But don't we have the the Bobcats clear the sidewalks?
They do.
That's why, that's why I'm not sure I understand that.
Okay, the business owners are required to keep the the. Right away. Right away in front of businesses clear of snow and ice, correct?
And and Bobcat does, well, the Bobcat does it in the morning. If it snows through the day, they don't always run continuously, but I think they do a great job. They clear my sidewalks.
Yeah, you're, the box that goes past my house also. I live in a residential area.
I think they.
They do downtown. They do downtown.
All right, put a pin in that.
Okay.
The other main issue is, I mean, I know for sure that. That the businesses are required to keep their right ways clear of snow and ice.
That's right.
Regardless of what.
So is my, so is my sidewalk, yeah.
So all right, put a pin in that. The other one is that, and I'm sure you've got something to say about this as well, um, that there is a need for a second bathroom in this end of downtown.
I agree with that.
And that is something that the DDA dedicated money could go towards finding a a way to have happen. And those are the two off the top of my head. There's a lot of things that a DDA can do, the money generated.
Totally supportive. This way, I'm sorry.
The money be generated. My understanding, and this is I've not looked at recently, is that. The properties, first of all, the downtown development, which has to be business. Um, it, some residences, if they're actually in in it can be included, but generally it's a business district. If there are improvements to those businesses, and Luke, if I'm wrong, correct me, or Dave, if I went wrong, correct me, if there are improvements to those businesses. The incremental improvement that would go towards the schools. Is instead captured by the DDA is something called the tax incremental finance plan. That is, that is the element that is, it does not touch the residences at all. It doesn't touch any property outside the DDA in terms of what. What the money comes from. This is a much larger discussion than we have tonight, but I think this is something that. Uh, in terms of of forward-thinking ideas, I think that is one idea that should be in here. That's the short end, I believe, of what a tip that is.
I mean, it could be a question, you do support the development of a DDA? This will allow for innovative methods to fund public infrastructure. Uh, maybe. This allows for innovative innovative taxing methods to fund public infrastructure, or just something kind of generally, just to say generally what it is. You just support this, this is generally what it would allow us to do.
It's a quick definition of the downtown building authority.
Yep. Throw it is a important, not important, unsure.
Great. I can, I can work with that one. Okay, and that same category, how important and following, we added in a few of these. So we expanded eco-tourism recreation. Um, we included the day-use transient docking.
Oh, just a point on that one. They're two. There's two different things there. Is that intended? Um, oh, the boating world, they think. A lot of boat, most waters when they think transient, they're thinking overnight. Um, day use is like going into town for a couple hours. You can keep it together. I'm just like, just.
Yeah, um, I I just, I kind of grouped them just for the sake of this, but I mean, if you feel that it.
I don't think it needs to be separated out. As long as we understand, we think it's clear that respondents understand that they're two different.
Sure. Good.
What does, I I understand what the word redevelopment means, but I'm not sure what it means in this context. How important is the redevelopment of aging buildings? Does that mean what?
Uh, that would be those that that are are just, you know, older structures, the underutilized, need a lot of work. And it would be. You're basically taking them down and rebuilding. Or significant improvements to those things.
Like gentrification type of, yeah. It's just a matter where they say it's important, unsure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think some people. Oh, excuse me. I think some people might look at preservation of aging buildings to be important. Other people would look at it and say repurposing or gentrification of aging buildings would be important, so. I don't know.
Historic district, we should might have something to say.
Exactly. And I suspect as well.
Yeah.
That is true.
That's I'm thinking of a different word than redeveloped, because I think that leads one way versus the other.
Yeah.
Rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation may not be, and that gives you can go both ways. Preservation, but preservation is only one way.
I think restoration. Preservation should be asked on its own and then.
Yes, we're just gonna say anything to add that in preservation.
And that may not even be, this might not even be the place to put it. I don't know, but.
I I know we addressed that elsewhere, probably there are priorities, uh, but this this does relate to.
And.
Development.
Yeah.
In in redevelopment of the aging buildings, I mean, that that is, it is, it might not be something a lot of us want to see, but I just, I thought that was something to ask just to see if what others. How people were fine, or if anyone will will say that that is important.
Well, I mean, fine. I understand all of this conversation, but the feeling, if I weren't involved in this conversation, I was taking the survey, I would stop there and probably not do anything because I don't know what redevelopment means. Yeah. And considering we have a historic district commission, we have a theoretically community value of appropriate. Restoration. I'm just saying, but I, at this point, it's.
I mean, you could say, I'd say redevelopment means tear it down and put something new up.
Yeah.
Correct. So in this context.
That is that the context of it?
That that that's the context here. So we, um. I thought we had a.
We have something later in the residential, if that's what you're thinking of. Well, that's the context and put rebuild aging buildings or something in there, but. Well, that's the context, then put rebuild aging buildings or something in there, but.
Okay, I can, I can span on that just to make sure that the intent is.
Parking lots, right, because people say what parking lots.
You think, you think, should we strike that one?
Redevelopment of parks.
So I just link it up.
Strike it, okay.
We're already going to have a task or something.
Yep, and actually, we were talking about redevelopment, so I'll, I'll words with that. So the intent is, you know, do you support, you know, older aging buildings just to be torn down and rebuilt as something new? Versus, the, the one right above that is improving commercial facades. That could actually be expanded a bit more just to. Uh, improving not just facades and storefronts, but you know, complete renovations, rehabilitation in a way.
Okay.
So that, that's more along like your preservation side of things.
Right, yep.
So I can kind of rehab, restoration. And then that, that will.
Even put improving the redevelopment, the sods and storefronts or something like that. David, that's the goal. I'm sorry.
Nope.
Good. Dave, the headings that you give us are, are the. Are you anticipating those will be in the final survey, or are they just for us? For example, the phrase downtown slash, or downtown comma, economic development, comma tourism, local business, is that. Are, is the survey going to have those kind of groupings as well, or is this just for our benefit?
It's for benefit now, and I think it would be beneficial to break up the survey a little bit, and we could.
I, I like it because it helps explain things like. The next question in terms of the development of aging buildings, for example, it's like, oh, I'm talking, we're talking about downtown. Versus aging buildings being a house.
Yep.
So that's why I want, I would like to keep these breaks in.
Yes, they would almost be like page breaks in the survey, because otherwise it's just gonna be one long scrolling survey.
Okay, great.
With this, with page breaks, you can do five or six questions, then you press next, and it hits back and moves on to the next category.
Got it.
Hopefully it even sort of goes into the chapters of the master plan. Some of these are the, the groupings of the master plan.
There we go.
Okay.
Dave, on the next one, what do you think of saying the availability of the following businesses? And then they have columns, they can say need more, okay, as is, too many. I suppose it's asking, do you need more? Because that becomes a yes or no. I don't know.
Yeah, does no mean, there's too many, or does no mean no, more?
It's just three columns, click which one, reach one.
Absolutely, so need more as is, and the last one would be.
Too many.
Everybody's gonna say we need more taverns.
After they say what's a tab now.
There we go.
We can do that.
Oh, you mean a bar?
Okay, then we have one about new buildings and character.
Did that be open ended, because people might have different opinions on more than one building? If you're, we're talking about the recently constructed commercial buildings fit the characters, is that the question you're talking about?
Yeah, 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 I think that, that makes sense because.
You might think the Butler Annex is terrible, and then this other example is perfect, so.
So maybe just, just rephrase that, so it's more of an open ended question, as in.
Yeah.
Okay, let me stop. Yeah, because all we would really get from that is people would either agree or disagree that. We don't really have any more context to it, so it makes sense. Okay, the next is concerning accommodations. So we have the question which we had a quick, quite a debate last time about the regulations and caps and short term rentals have been effective. Bed breakfasts should be allowed in all residential areas. Bed breakfasts should be allowed in transitional areas near downtown. Boutique-ins are appropriate in transitional areas near downtown.
So I know AJ commented previously, and I agree that I think the cap question could be like, lead to different interpretations of different answers. I would rather have it say, are they important, are they necessary or something? But effectiveness to me is something to be evaluated five years from now, so. I don't mind having a question on caps to get people's take on it, but.
Some may. I don't know, do you? It's also tough because I know there are some people who support the regulations, but don't support the caps, grouping them together. And then it goes back to what we talked about before, how when you read that, if they've been effective, are you saying like, no, I want more? Cap, I want a bigger cap, I want no cap.
And there's some people that believe that. The regulations should be effective, but yet aren't being enforced, right? You, you hear that.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of different ways to take the question.
Yeah. What are we trying to, what are we trying to find out here, I guess, is the question, are we just trying to get a. Do you support it? Instead of whether it's effective, like are you in support of it or not?
The fact that we should be asking if we, if they believe the caps.
Yeah, if we want to talk about.
To maintaining the character of the town.
Yeah, it almost goes to a different, di- different indication on the questionnaire.
And you can match that back to where they live and all, they get all sorts of good data from these.
Yeah.
I, I kind of go with, I think what Craig was saying, I think it's premature to be asking about them at all. You know, we, it, they haven't had an opportunity, either the regulations or the caps. I don't think either one have really had an opportunity to. What we had, what, one summer.
And you haven't really had any reduction in licenses to speak of.
I would say, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, in terms of one summer, I was thinking more of the regulations, um, you know, I, I know some people have. Called about noise, for example, and stuff, but I, I think it's. Not sure there's much of a body of data on, on the enforcement regulations and, and. No, anyway.
I'm, I'm fine if you want to take it out too, I just, I agree that the.
I'm not afraid of the question, but I also agree that, I mean, we did a whole lot of work on this, or not we, you, and other people. And survey data and analysis of what the community thought, and that's recent, so.
Yeah.
But if we're, if we're going to address.
Ask the question.
What's that?
Do we need the question?
Do we need the question?
I'm just wondering, what if we just move, like, availability of like bed and breakfast, boutique-ins. Hotels, whether they think we need more, okay, as is, or too many. I mean, are we really asking them whether they should go into zones? I don't know if the average person.
I think that makes, that would, that would simplify things a bit more.
Right.
Moving bed breakfasts and some boutique-ins under, do we need more of?
Right. Right.
Then we can move on, that gets us. At least one of us.
Luke, does the city have any data, a lot to, to short term rentals in the caps?
All in terms of.
Effectiveness or. Effect.
I mean, it's pretty easy to look and see, you know, when the caps went into effect. How many rentals did we have, and how many do we have now, and that definitely has, there is less now through some natural attrition. So, yeah, the, you can, in terms of. The amount of rentals were going down in certain areas, and obviously. That was somewhat the aim, so you, you could illustrate that. It is still, you know, like these guys have mentioned, it was still early doors, so it's not a huge difference. I mean, it's a very small percentage, so.
I just think we don't even know, so.
I'd like to leave it out right now.
Yep, I agree.
I'm okay with that.
Does anyone really want? We want to talk about mobility and transportation, that's. Any issue with, with transportation? Really the only change on all of this was we added the. The multiuse pathway should be constructed along Perryman to walk, to bike to Ogle Beach. And I think based on the conversation last time, maybe we might as well be specific about that and ask that question, Greg.
Uh, I, I think that we need to really poke the bear, so to speak, and, and it should re-construct it along Park Street. And or Perryman Street. That's to put, to put.
I agree.
To put it just on Perryman, doesn't serve the purpose. Um, and I would argue that Park Street, because of its bends and hills, is actually. Potentially more dangerous to a pedestrian or bicyclist than Perryman is.
I actually put Park Street as a separate one, only from the standpoint, I, I see Perryman, the benefit of the Perryman. If it was on Perryman, is it encourages people to come across on the chain ferry.
Yes.
And the chain ferry drops off, and then if they had a sidewalk that they could walk from the chain ferry down to the beach, I think more people would take the chain ferry. Just like if we had some business over there that gave people a reason to go across the river. But, so I, I see him.
I'm fine with it as a separate, but I think Park Street needs to be included.
We agree.
I got sidewalk along Park Street, there's more additions.
Possibly separate that out on two questions then?
And the other general, and I'm not sure where to fit it in, additional traffic control device. Um, and the one I'm thinking of, and I, there may be other places, but. There has been talk about a traffic control device at Lake Street and Blue Star. And again, if we're thinking about where are we going in the next five years.
There is a question.
Intersections for improvement in signals, lighting, signage, and the very, very last page eight.
Right, it's an open.
Eight, where are we?
Very last question.
Well, like, or page seventeen in the.
Right, that's exactly where I put my note for this, so.
It's the intersection, you know, it's an open ended, but you could also, we know the main ones that people are going to talk about. The one thing that, on mobility, what I just had mentioned. You know, the chain ferry is unique to Sagatuck, we're the only one that has one in the country. You know, like, there should be, somehow I spilled a worker question in there, like we're talking about, do you use parks, or do you use, if you're gonna exercise? I don't know, I'm trying to think, like, how many people use the chain ferry, or see it as a benefit? I don't know. I'm not certain where I would kind of work it in, but it was just.
Well, there's two ways to look at that, one is. What do you think, have, do you use the cheaper, the other is, do you see a benefit in the cheaper, which. I would be shocked if we don't, when you get a pretty strong response.
I don't know, it's just, it's one of the things if we start writing about the city. That will be, so I want to make certain you kind of conclude, because it's another one of the things that is somewhat unique.
I'll tell you during the, this, last month, this month, when I'm out walking River in downtown. And it's during the day, when this chain ferry is operating, I mean, there are lots of people coming back and forth all the time.
And it's very unique, and it's, that's actually a city property, I believe, the city owns that, that's, I, I, I agree, that's what you're talking about.
That somehow will be the working ten, I don't know. Whether it's part, whether it's part of. Is this mobility, you know, because it's part of transportation.
I think it's one of those two.
But I'd like to see something in there, question about the use or the importance of it.
I think that's good, Steve.
It's really a landmark, probably for most, a lot of residents, probably considered a landmark.
They go across and they walk for a few minutes and they walk back, it's just like, say they took it.
Well, I guess, now a lot of people are parking at the Baldi Park line to get into town. To now they're taking the chain ferry back the other ways, it's kind of interesting.
Right.
In this, in this mobility one, there's, do you agree or disagree with the following? Yes, it talks about multipath uses. Yes.
The whole chain ferry.
They cancel.
It talks about public transit. I think it fits there.
So with the chain ferry question under the agree or disagree question?
Uh, yeah, just, there's a few of those, the one that's on eight of the survey list, page eight, so it's the fourth from the bottom. The downtown area safe, optional public transit, the multi-use paths. Do you then agree or disagree that the chain ferry is. An important part of.
An important component to our transportation.
Yes, yeah, there you go.
Something like that, yeah.
What's the difference on page nine between an on-street bike lane and an on-street painted bike lane?
I don't do that too.
Uh, I could make a distinction there, but a, a on-street bike lane would be either like a striped lane with, with the side stripes. Um, what, whether it's protected or not, dead with the followers, whereas, uh. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Just curious.
You know, actually, I think maybe the distinction should have been between on-street painted bike lanes and on-street sheriffs. So we're, we're, so, don't think. Yeah, I think my spread for sure. We, the other option is paint sheriffs, where, where bikes, just say, following rules of this, this vehicles. But that's not necessarily an invest, a significant investment, that's what you call it. I was, so we added in something about a new home should be limited to match the scale of existing homes in the city. Um, just thinking about that maybe matches too strong, but we could say consistent with or compatible with.
That's good. Compatible.
This is.
Aren't they, aren't they already required to be that way under our zoning ordinance? They can't be three stories tall, for example, I mean, unless we're asking. Unless we're asking. Do we want to amend, does somebody want to amend their zoning ordinance to allow McMansions on, on a lot, but.
It's not a requirement, just from a zoning point of view, if both of your neighbors were small cottages, you still could, you know. Fill out a lot to the maximum lot coverage in that.
Do it to a two-story house.
Like, if both your neighbors were at ten percent, you're still going up to thirty percent. There are some exceptions to that, like in the historic district, there's some requirements for matching massing and things. But obviously, you know, there's plenty of community residential that isn't a historic district.
Yeah, I, I didn't, you might, got it.
And we had in the historic district expansion, that was mentioned the last meeting. We go into next page with the environments. City identity, and this is where we started to kind of fade away at the last meeting, so just want to make sure we're, we're still good on this.
Tap me right now.
I know, it's the bottom of the say.
Hey, but, but I don't want to delay things, but. Uh, this is the backyard chicken in the appropriate question. I mean, we're talking about homes being compatible, we're talking about apartments, we're talking about. Townhomes.
I think it fits.
Upper apartments, and then all of a sudden, it's like.
It's talking about character in a sense, and I think that.
And some people think that, you know, it goes with, I, I see it fitting quite well.
Long as it fits there.
Well, we can, we can also just call, maybe housing in neighborhoods too, so now housing neighborhood issues, or the, the just housing.
That could be. But to me, it was just, it stood out because I think I was talking more about the.
Stakeholder sensitivities there, Steve.
No, I, I want to make certain that it's, it gets the attention, and people don't just think, well, they just threw it in there. Because I am curious of what the responses are going to be.
Then we go into environmental protection trees. Doom protection, dark sky friendly lighting.
I thought it was interesting, I, most people are going to ask what dark sky friendly is, but. I kind of get what the gist is, I'm hoping most people would.
I could expand on that a little bit, just, just kind of. Simple statement about what that means, dark sky friendly lighting.
And are we talking. Requiring residences to have dark sky friendly lighting, or are we talking city street lights?
So, yeah, maybe that is a distinction.
Or my, no, I think that's a distinction with the difference.
Just Applewood City.
It is, I'm with you. Maybe city, city, if that's what you're getting after, city light fixtures.
Two di- two different issues, I, I think you could ask about both, this. You can have better type in the lighting for commercial, primarily we usually enforce at a commercial level. Uh, but also you can't have it for a single residential lots, um, you know, maybe some, some, uh. Uh, general, general lighting types, and just to ensure glares going on in other properties or upward, upward lighting. So, but then there's a, a city lane situation as well, so I think that's a different issue. Uh, but I guess this is, that's really general, should, should, as a community, should we embrace more dark side. Uh, but I guess this is, that's really general, so should, should, as a community, should we embrace more dark side?
It's like, ask, do you agree or disagree, or?
We keep it fairly broad at this point, so then you figure out how to implement that later.
I can't wait to see the answers to the next one.
Do we, um, want this as city identity?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause I, I think Douglas has done such a great job on trying to develop theirs.
Uh, we have a sense. That's out of desperation.
I know.
I'm just saying.
But I know, it, it's been a discussion with, with council on that, you know, Simon engine. So I'm just curious to see how important community businesses.
Then you, uh, then we have city services, we, uh, we'll pull on to planning the zone, et cetera, Lee.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what?
Uh, we, we had the cities rate the following city services.
Oh, oh, can we go back, uh, the difference between wayfinding and gateway? What do you mean, I, maybe I don't know what wayfinding signs are attractive?
Sure, uh, uh, well, we, it's, it's the idea that in the main, you know, like with the palace sign, um. Where wayfinding would be smaller signs along streets, or you just sort of. Wayfinding is, could be a kiosk, and you are here, little map of the city.
Sometimes they have a cute little, more shopping this way.
Beach that way.
Countdown.
Okay.
Generally, you know pedestrians, it looks like this, the fall.
Thank you.
But maybe I can also just worship that, this is like city gateway sign, you know. City gateway signs versus a pedestrian level wayfinding signings.
Thank you, I'm sorry, uh, next, next city services.
Uh, so. Great policy services. And so on, you know, we, we, we do not divide up the, the various departments in the city, but you know, just overall services.
Good with that.
Uh, next then is a. Three hours information, so this is about. City's website, uh, their social media presence, uh, meetings are at testable convenience. Easy to call city hall and get answers. Best ways to receive information. And then we get into, to our, our big, uh, describing the last meeting, which would be our, our. Overall city priorities, and then our overall, uh, tri-communities priorities. And last two pages.
And here, you're working to have a break.
Yes, yeah, we have a ranking system here, and then we, we did add about affordable workforce housing as well as. Just clarify residential growth and development will be infill neighborhoods or redevelopment of existing offices. And then we have us a few general concluding questions, so if, if they are. We did not put them asleep, or they, can they, they made it to the end, congratulations, um, they can ask. They can answer one of the best things about living, won't complain in the city, what improvements are needed, what else would you like to sell us? And then you can provide your email address if you want more information on the project.
So that won't be reported with the survey answers though, right? Cause otherwise that would defeat the whole purpose of trying to not have someone's address or, or their name, right? Cause my email address is my name, so.
Maybe what we could do, uh, maybe I could direct them to a different link or something.
I think that'd be a good idea.
If you want more information, like either email or project manager, email, we could, uh. Or just, uh, maybe somehow, uh, direct them to you. Survey that's just an email for you.
Be careful though, cause you don't want them to click that right before they get to the submit and then take some away, and then. The startling. Yeah.
There's, there's a part of the message at the end of the survey.
Okay.
So maybe I can say, um, for more information, visit the city's website, uh.
The submitted thing, okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point, though, go on, yeah.
That will change the results of that survey.
Six total results.
Was there any other questions of anyone else? Thought that.
I, I just wanted to throw a couple more ideas out and, and e- easily a, a quick thumbs up or thumbs down, whether we want to. Ask about consolidation of, I'm sorry, consolidation of the DPW with Douglas, for example, that has been initiated, has been raised. Um, the next one is whether or not, uh, Sagatuck should, um. Give up the contract with the sheriff's department and either form its own police department or go with Douglas again. That's an issue that is out there. Um, and, uh, the one I, I don't think should be included is whether we should merge with Douglas, that has been. Voted on several times and beaten to death, but, um, and the last one is whether the city should, I'm sorry? It's been a bit since the last consolidation. Okay, so. Lots changed. I'm mentioning that.
Sure.
Okay, so that's three, and the fourth one is, um, annexation of township property to increase our tax base and increase and decrease our taxes. Um, I, you know. For anybody who wants to hear, I wouldn't mind if Sagatuck went all the way to exit forty-one. I think that would be a real benefit to our community, and I think a lot of communities, when you drive around, you will find that city incorporation limits go. Far beyond what you would think a, a typical city is, so those are four ideas that. Um, again, if we're thinking forward. Um, you know, I, I apologize, I didn't put any of these in writing, and I should have, so people can, so I'm not throwing them out at, at, at will and other, but these are ideas that have. Been come up before and people have thoughts on, um. Yay and nay, um, so anyway.
I think they're all good thoughts.
I'm sorry?
I think they're all good thoughts, I just.
It'd be interesting to see people's responses, I don't know how you would tell, if, if you got. Eighty percent favorable for annexation, I'm like, well, I don't know exactly what the next step is. All of a sudden, say.
Gather arms.
Probably go become part of ours, it's. I have no idea how that would, uh.
There's a legal procedure under statute, how to annex township property, I, I don't know that one off the top of my head, uh, I've never done it. But, um, uh, well, if, one of the main complaints about Sagatuck, and you talk about livability. Is, and, and why people choose, at least they claim to choosing the township versus here, is how expensive the taxes are here. The, the perception that taxes here are too expensive, and one way to reduce taxes would be to increase our taxes. And one way to increase our tax base would be to annex part of the township. So, and that is, anyway.
Yeah.
Very, so, but, but, and, and, you know, there's the, the people who say. Back to the sheriff's department, and I, I am personally about the DPW, I think we have a fricking great DPW, and I would. A thousand percent saying, no, I don't merge our DPWs, but there is an economy of scale, when you talk of two communities the size that we have. About, gosh, how many backhoes do communities our size need? So if you're talking about efficiency, economy of scale, again, reducing costs. Um, so.
I, I think those reasonable questions for the survey is we're trying to look at the next five, ten years, I think those are good questions to get some feedback, all three of them.
Instead of going to DPW, you could just broaden it out and say, should the city explore further collaboration, operate, community collaboration?
I think we should use consolidation. I think, I think the words matter there.
In, in the city service, city identification, that little bracket area there, yeah.
I'm sorry, Dave, I didn't give you more time, I, I didn't give you time to come up some drafts for tonight's thing, but, um, if, if everybody kind of on board with at least looking at those. Uh, I, that, that's just, I'm touring them out there.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind seeing them.
If maybe eighty percent saying, I'm thrilled with the sheriff's department, and, and I recognize the cost that a police, separate police department. The cost savings we're having with the sheriff's department versus the police department, that kind, we, we don't know which way we're gonna go with that. Gosh, I never see a sheriff's crew to go down my house, down my street, I don't feel safe in my home because. Fill in the blank. Why stop at the township, let's go to exit thirty-six, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna gear up, I'm kidding, we don't, we don't take Douglas. We'll leave you Douglas.
Alright, so those are the additional, which I think are good.
I think those all sort of are natural links to like the city services. And maybe we, city services might not be the.
Two, two of the three fit there, and then the annexation, I was, I, I wrote it down under, uh, the more general questions. Yeah, but I don't know where that fits, I, I don't know, it's just where I wrote it in.
It could definitely fit on the general.
And it will explode.
Yes. They'll be like, are they starting that again?
What do you mean, you're gonna take our township?
But it's not, it's not unheard of, I mean, if you think about Maple Street, the other side of Maple Street is the township, and, and they're not paying for that road repair. They're not paying half, so why would they, no, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but I thought that. Maybe they're not paying for the sidewalk, or there's something that the township isn't contributing to that I would have thought would have been equitable for a bordering property, so.
Sidewalk, we, we did come to a cost share.
Oh, we did, okay, but anyway, those, on the other side of Maple, why wouldn't that be Sagatuck?
Yeah, it was started, that's a natural.
Yeah, we had split Campbell, we split the cost with Douglas, but in one side of Campbell, you're. Douglas, one side of Campbell, you're Sagatuck, you know, using streets as dividing lines, I'd never really seen. Alright, anything else on the survey questions? While we're talking about the survey.
Uh, we should, next up to a general, who was the one updating the, the survey. So even, you know, you also remember, you know, this is the online platform, so that we can all take sample survey, we get estimates on how long this. Executed decisions from there, if we need to cut it down or divide or, or just assess the general flow and use your primary method of survey.
Alright, so before we move to the next topic, while we're talking about this. Are we in favor of having a special meeting on Wednesday, July thirtieth, we proposed that, previously we said we could tentatively hold it. If we do, we could have our review of these final questions and get a draft of the survey. The reason for it is that if we're thinking that we would like to get a survey out in August and then have any type of public forums in September. We would almost need to have the survey approved before our next meeting in August, and so the July thirtieth was the date that was being proposed. Four o'clock in the afternoon again, if, if we could.
I'm good with that.
How does that work?
Possibility, I'll be out of town.
Okay with me.
I don't know, I'm, I'm good otherwise, so I would say no.
I would probably be remote that day.
Yeah, I, I would have, I, I'm, I have some meetings in Lansing that day.
Now, do we have to have a. Quorum still to review the survey?
I. I did speak with legal about that, and they did prefer, I mean, actually Trent's, Trent's here.
You need a quorum to make decisions, so like if you were gonna alter this final draft, I think you would probably be better to have, have a quorum there. Or I'm sorry, if you're gonna alter the current draft to make a final, um, you could potentially have discussion, but then to finalize it and make the decision to submit it to. You know, to send it out in August, you would need a quorum to make that decision.
I, I think we have a great collaborative effort, people are, are really engaged, and I would much prefer to have a meeting where a- all of us are here. Versus, um, what were you saying?
I, I can be online.
I could, I could probably make that work.
I mean, if we have five of us to vote, that we think it's still be part of the meeting.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I.
I guess it's just trying to make certain we had enough for a quorum. Um, because if two of them can't make it, then we do need the other five, because our rules require five for a quorum, which. Has never made any sense, but we have not changed that yet.
But would their input be as we are doing now, or would it be the public comment in the beginning and public comment at the end?
Either way, we wouldn't have quorum. That, we wouldn't have quorum if they were voted in.
No, we have quorum, there's five of us.
There'll be five, it's probably talking mechanics of, of their input, would they be able to, oh, input.
It would be Ray, Mark, Joe, me.
Bobby.
And Bobby.
That's five.
That's five of us.
I thought you were on a show.
It's possible that I have a conflict, I won't know until tomorrow, but right now I would say count me in.
Okay.
Based on what I know.
Well, we could tentatively schedule it.
Tentatively.
Based on, uh, based on that.
We had to do it on the weeks when. We didn't have council. Workshops, and that puts us at the thirtieth.
Gretchen. So could Austin and CJ participate in conversation?
That's what I was asking. Yeah, generally, we recommend that you don't participate virtually, the Open Meetings Act is pretty strict, it's kind of a complicated provision when it comes to. Virtual participation, um, there's some specific exemptions, but they wouldn't apply here, um. So, yeah, I mean, generally, we would say public comment, um, section, but, um, we can look into that if it's something that. You know, we want to see if we can interpret it differently or something.
What if I'm later? As far as if I am here before the end of the meeting and can vote, can we establish a quorum towards the end of the meeting? For voting purposes?
You, I mean, yeah, once you have a quorum, you can make a decision, um. Yeah, I think that would be an acceptable way to do it, yeah, well, if, if, uh, it would be a little awkward, I think, to notice it for a certain time and then not have a quorum, but I, I think for practical reasons. I think that would be okay.
Are you thinking that five o'clock would be more suitable?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we could begin at five.
And we, we set four because that's what council workshops were, we're trying to limit the amount of time.
Right.
You know, for the staff and overtime, but I'm flexible, so it's really.
Any in town that week?
Okay, so four works better.
Four works better. Yeah, I, I would work.
Why don't we just move it, because also. Trent's comment about, um, that they can't participate. Item by item, like we're doing tonight, I mean, it really, I think it really hamstrings them. To say at the beginning of the meeting, here are all my comments on the survey, or at the end, here were all my comments on the survey, and. You know, we've already moved on or haven't gotten to them yet, um. I did, I. I don't, I don't, personally, I don't see myself after this iteration. I, I feel comfortable with what David's gonna come back with, and I don't think I'll have many.
And you. And, well, I'm feeling like, okay, I'm gonna see his, his, uh, the report and where we're at, and I feel like it's gonna be pretty close, and if I have issues, I'm gonna. Make changes and I'll be here. If, if, if I look at it, I'm feeling like I'm pretty good, I'm probably gonna say, okay, just, I'll remote, or I'll make a couple of my comments. Um, but if I see issues where I feel I have to be here, I'll be here.
Okay, I, I'm just right, apparently, you guys raising in.
Well, I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to, yeah, trying to figure out how I would do that, but I'll. I can do that.
So, July thirtieth, four o'clock. Okay.
And that would be the only topic of that meeting, would be the, the survey?
So I would suggest we discuss the survey as well as the, the future opportunity for, for a public event. Um, I, I can come back with, with some general ideas of, of stations and boards and, and. You know, a general overview of what that community event will look like, I think you're, um. Playing on maybe targeting September for some, an event of that nature, and so I think if I can release folks some ideas by me, at the special meeting on the thirtieth. And then, you give me a hotter cold feeling in those, and then I will refine them for a regular August meeting. And then hopefully at that point, you can say, yes, those boards look good, this is a good strategy, let's start getting word out. But I, I think we need to at least initiate that conversation on, on the community event planning at that point.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
I, I would propose, um, as we're moving past that, I don't. I don't know how long we anticipate a discussion on C three, but since we're nearing two hours, I don't know if there's any merit to. Tabling it for another meeting, I just don't want to rush the discussion on a new.
New zone.
A new zone. But if, if people are up for it now, that's fine, but.
It is definitely up for discussion.
I, I don't think it's technically time sensitive, so I wouldn't mind moving it.
I'd be okay tabling it.
Table it.
Me too.
Yep.
Give the time it deserves.
Your plan on being at the future August meeting?
Yeah, we, we can, uh, maybe have a call, slightly, we have a, a major work for construction, as well as a special range for eight U. Um, you know, master plan discussions, and then, so I mean, there'll be some other things today, generally, but we can just. Be efficient with our time and, and hopefully get to that, you know, August.
And you can.
Push back to September.
And you can kick signs down the road further too, if you need to.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, it wasn't on this agenda, and so it's.
Uh, and, and you said that'd be questionable, play a mission, should, uh, is the priority to take care of the signs or, or this district and. Maybe we pick one of those for the August meeting.
Was there a lot of comments about what was in the packet regarding? The Commercial Street, the Water Street Commercial District?
I, there's some things I'd like to talk about, the site setbacks are worthwhile discussing.
If there was things that you specifically had, like as being permitted, not permitted, if you want to share those with Luke and David in advance. But have the discussion.
There you go, I'd put my priority in the proposed C three over, just cause I.
Me too.
I, I haven't heard a lot of rumblings of potential First Amendment litigation coming down the pipeline, but I don't know.
Oh, I definitely think that the zone should be addressed before.
Science, yes.
And sorry, Trent, but the, the zone has been discussed for almost a year now.
And, and I think it might be a little bit wider lift from the conversation we're gonna have on science, I think we're gonna need some, like, dedicated hour or more.
They're really worth for, okay.
For the sign work, just based on our own internal conversations with, with Trent and Jacob, I. Really, uh, we'd get down to weeds, and it can be a, probably need to really focus on that.
Now, cause we had it on the agenda, it was just a review, we don't actually have to have a motion to table, or do we? Cause we had it as a review, we didn't have anything voted or.
If there's no decision scheduled, I don't know that you necessarily would have to table it, but a, a motion to lay it on the table is just a majority vote, and I'm, I mean, I think either way it would be. It'd be acceptable, but there's no decision tonight, so I mean, you could review it at the next meeting too, you could review it for multiple meetings, so.
Just wanted to make certain before we move on. So for an agreement that we will move that to the August, that takes care of old business, I don't know if new business, the only thing that wasn't on here, but it's. I can do it at the end, if it's not appropriate, um, council is forming a task force to look at parking. And parking issues in the city, there, there's gonna be a council member on it, Joe, right now, he's business owner, but, but bottom line is, we need a planning person. Um, to represent the planning commission viewpoint, cause they're gonna be at C V B, business owner, resident, council. Missing something, um, so I, the question came up, I just want to throw it out, if anybody's interested. Uh, Joe, you wouldn't be eligible because you're already. Right, cause I put two people on council. The, they don't have the exact dates for the workshops, but they're probably gonna be a lot like short term rental, there would be typically. Like three or four in the afternoon type of meetings, so I know that kind of affects, you know, a couple, so I'm basically. You know, kind of looking at, you know. Anyone who would like to step up and be the, uh, planning representative, uh, let Luke or myself know, so we can communicate it over to Holly.
I'm happy to jump on, if, if no one else is dying for it, I.
I think a council member recommended you for it.
I believe they did.
I, I wasn't gonna say it until you.
I definitely. No, so, and again, I know the council has to like vote on whoever Holly has to sign off on whoever it is, but we needed somebody that we could at least, um, say was willing to do it.
I think AJ would be a great choice, but.
I was, I think it's a great choice, I was concerned about time.
You live on the hill, I live, where parking is an issue, so I think it makes, you have a different perspective.
I'm happy to present all you fine folks.
Fantastic. Um, we had no communication, report of officers, the planning and zoning. Report was included in our packets, anyone have any questions for Luke, I think you guys will continue to do a great job on those reports. That along with Ryan, the community one, it's like, yes. If there's no comments on that, then we move to public comments, so at this time, we have no one in the room for public comments, is there anybody online? We don't have any, so we'll close public comments, which moves us to commissioner comments, start this in with Craig.
So Luke, are we gonna see you on the thirtieth, when you last stayed, okay, absolutely, well, then I will not, um, say nice things about you. Other than that, uh, that's all I have.
No comments. Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to echo what else, I haven't said it yet, but, um. The revisions to the survey were considerable and, and, and right on point, and I can capture a lot of the stuff we picked up last time, and so. Um, kudos, thank you.
Great meeting, really pleased progress making the survey.
Yeah, good progress, uh, good meeting.
It's all good.
No, appreciate Dave's work, appreciate Luke, gonna give us his time on his last full evening. Um, of employment, cause I do, I heard you have a meet on the thirty-first, but you're still gonna ask potentially time on the thirtieth. And I think also I heard a comment. Some of the other commit, commissions, as well as council members, were like, said, hey, they wanted to see the surveys, I encourage anyone to kind of realize that the survey questions are in our packets. They have the ability to, you know, read through it, they have comments, they can come and make the comments at public, uh, you know, the comment part of it. And then the rest of it is kind of, I think, up to, you know, us to kind of make the decision. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.